Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
The Wunsocket School Committee meeting on Wednesday, March 11, 2020 is now called to order at 7 o'clock. Dr. McGee, roll call.
Chairman Borjan.
Yeah.
Vice Chair Burke.
Yeah.
Mrs. Capwell.
Here.
Mrs. Neal.
Here.
Mrs. Kibiskis.
Here.
Would you please stand with me for a moment of silence and a pledge? Pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of America, one nation, under God, in the name of the Lord, the King, the Son, and the Holy Spirit. Why don't we begin tonight's meeting with Citizens Good and Welfare? If you would like to address the school committee, please come to the podium and state your name and address for the record, and please keep your comments moving about five minutes. Thank you.
My name is Elizabeth Rhonda. I'm 45, four hours out of Wunsocket. I am a parent of three children, and I have been homeschooling in Wunsocket for 13 years. I had very recently found out that new homeschooling policy was written, and that this policy will be discussed for passage tonight. I would like to express my concerns with some of the language of the policy and to ask you to make some changes to the policy before it is passed. At the very least, I would like to ask that all members take additional time to improve the legal policy, line seven for our state law, as well as constitutional law. My first concern is with part of the statement of philosophy on page one. The last sentence states that "all parents are expected to comply with state law regarding the education of students in public schools." I think this sentence needs to be rewritten as "our parents are expected to comply with state law regarding the education of homeschool students." So substitute public for homeschool. As many statements that apply to public schools do not apply to homeschools. Next, in the middle of page one, the policy enumerates what information we are allowed to contain. My concern is with number four, which states the number of days of instruction to be provided, including the number of hours of instruction per day, which must be equal to that required by law in public schools. This statement should be advised to match the state law, which is, and I quote, "from the state law, the period of attendance will be substantially equal to that required by law in public schools." Asking for information which is different from state law will cause confusion, and parents who are following the state law may appear to be out of compliance with the city policy, which requires unnecessary issues that would need to be resolved. This same requirement is also remoted on page two, listing the EOLI requirements on page four. So this section would also need to be amended to reflect the requirements of state law. Finally, at the bottom of page one, the statement, "and I quote, 'interviewing the EOLI is freely considered, but shall not be limited to considering.'" A lot of part of that statement concerns us, what other things might be considered as undefined and non-law. Additionally, the numbers one and two are unsupported by any state law that provides homeschooling. Therefore, I am requesting that the whole section be eliminated. I have learned that at two of the three subcommittee meetings, the public was allowed to comment. However, I was not even aware that new policy was under consideration, so this was the first time I am able to express my concerns. As a member of the Homeschool Legal Defense Association, I have reached out to my local representative for advice. However, he has yet to contact me, but I do believe he has written a letter to you discussing the legal aspects of this new policy. I would like to ask the school committee to make all the necessary changes to ensure that Wunsocket's policy lines up precisely with state law in order to avoid confusion and unnecessary delays for families implementing their homeschooling plans. Thank you very much for listening to my concerns and suggestions.
Thank you very much.
Good evening. My name is Solomita Frisbee, 362 Hart Place. I am also a Wunsocket resident homeschooler. I've been in school for a few years here, but in total, I've been in school since 2004 with my two sons. I support all of the issues outlined, presented to you in the letter you would receive from the Homeschool Legal Defense Association. And I would just like to reiterate my request that you stay in line with the language that currently exists too, to prevent further confusion. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Jessica Curry. I reside in West Grand Island. I'm here tonight because I am the state coordinator for the Brownville Patrol Teachers. And I would like to say that I also support what's outlined in the letter you received, page 11. Soon you all have seen this copy. And I spoke to Mr. Burke for a few minutes before this meeting, and I'm sure a lot of changes have been made. So hopefully, all of what we're saying is, you know, is already going to resolve. At the last meeting, it was said that you were going to go into option one, which would not commit homeschool students to enroll in any programs in the school. If that is the case, then I believe field trips and conferences with the principal should be omitted from the policy because the course were only in regards to participating with things within the school. So I don't know if that's something that's been considered. Thank you for all the time you've given today.
Thank you so much. Is there anyone else who'd like to address the school committee? Anyone? Then why don't we go into, I guess we have some guests from Montier. Are they here?
Good evening.
Hello.
How are you? So I'm just going to wait for our presentation to come down. But basically, we just wanted to kind of give you an overview of some of the things that are happening at four years of campus. So we are unique in the fact that we are two buildings. So one of the ways that we really try to bring everybody together are to have our large school improvement team split up into smaller subcommittees. So we're going to talk a little bit about the subcommittees today. And I have my awesome teachers here, Michelle Penn, yes, this is some good work. But we have some of our student council students here and some teachers.
So as Ms. Moniz said, our two-building campus is quite large. So in order to promote leadership among our teachers, we kind of broke our sit team up into several subcategories such as attendance, data, student council, no bullying, restorative practices. That way, we can have a larger participant pool with our teachers and shareholders could participate more. Another thing that we did that is also key is we created a live virtual document. So as each subcommittee meets once a month, we can update the larger document so they know what's been going on, what's been addressed, things that might need to be improved. And then those leaders of those smaller subcommittees meet once a month, and we review things, we see how it fits into our school improvement plan, if it's promoting our goals and things that need to be worked out and refined.
So we have campus college pride, and one of the things we really work on across the campus, we try to not only encourage students to learn about different colleges, but we really, again, like I said, try to get them to learn about what kinds of things are happening, what are your interests? We have a career fair that will be coming up so that students can continue to learn about whatever pathway they may choose. But one of the things our attendance committee does is the walking plus. We have our math class, it's a run at Eagle. We have perfect attendance practice each trimester. Again, our loss of attendance is run each one when we recognize students, and we have family where it has to be.
So with attendance, we do need once a month to go over the data regarding our students. So as you can see, we've broken it up by grade, so this is as of 2/25. So again, we have been trying to implement as much as we can in order to improve our attendance. There still is some difficulty with illnesses and sometimes students taking vacations. But again, we definitely try to make sure that teachers are calling if the students have missed several days in a row. Just like Ms. Moniz explained, we try to put as many incentives in place. So for our older students, we do no homework passes, that they're able to come in every single day of the month. Little kids, we have brat tags, so it's like little keychains with the months. We really enjoy collecting those. And so again, we just try a lot of different initiatives to continue to try to improve our attendance.
In this past month, we had 42% of our kids that missed zero days, so we're really excited about that. That's perfect attendance. And then when we looked at students who've just missed one day this past month, we had 66.5%. So we're excited about the work that we've been doing with attendance. These are just some pictures that we have up at the school, our perfect attendance breakfast that we invite families to each trimester, attendance zeros. Some information data is really important to us on campus, so why are our students missing school? These are just some of the reasons. So again, we try to help, how can we do that? Transcription is an issue, you know, again, that was one of the reasons we tried to come up with some solutions. Walking plus is one of them. We are very transparent about our data, so that's something that is in the office. Parents can see from the day before how many students were absent, dismissed, or tardy. And we will talk a little bit about our RICAS data now.
So I am the data and RICAS team chair. So some of the things we've been working on this year is coming together as a staff and really diving deep into our RICAS data to see which standards we're really not throwing in our meetings. So during our meetings together, we're coming up with different plans and strategies to implement to break those gaps and really help our students succeed in different standards. We also have a virtual data wall of all of our star data, which is shared with everybody, and it's updated after every single SWC. And we also have our data displayed in COVID here and Citizen. We're better than parents where we can do how we are doing. Teachers are also posting their individual data outside of their classrooms. And we are also having students track their data across campus, so they are holding more accountability. And they really like to see, and they are growing, and it's something that is really helping them really take on the test and hold that growth motivation.
Hi, I'm Heidi Maston, part of the campus task force in school spirit. We're very committed to having a positive atmosphere, not only for the children, but for the staff. We like to have school spirit days, crazy stuff, Disney days, things that make it fun and that make children want to go to school on those days, and it promotes our attendance. We also have a teacher who's making t-shirts now, so we have a lot of positive t-shirts that have to do with reading, kindness, the 100th Day, anything to really just make the kids really happy in school. And not only that, but we have a lot of nights that are just for the staff, like to build morale within the staff. You know, it's not always an easy job, and it's nice to know that you have your colleagues that you can lean on. So we do things like we gather that add is fun, we have Christmas parties, camp parties, bowling, we have an end of the year scavenger hunt, anything that we can do to just to support each other. We're very fortunate to have a supportive administration, which just makes it a really happy place at Montier.
So my name is Alina Sharet, Solution Coach, and we're bullying team. So two years ago at Citizens, several teachers were trained by the no bullying organization. They came to our school and they did full-day TPs with us. And basically, what we do is anytime a student says that they are being bullied, there's a required form that we fill out, but then we also provide that student with a solution team coach. So that coach would be assigned to the student, and they would meet with that student one-on-one. So the student could describe what is happening to them within the school building or wherever the bullying is taking place. If the coach decides that yes, this is true bullying and not just pure conflict, then it's leading to the next step where we build a solution team based from the students' classrooms, sometimes also from their grade level. And those students have parent permission first, and then they are pulled together into like a 10, 15-minute team where they're brought into a private setting without the bullying student, and the solution coach goes over what is happening to that student, and basically comes out to a point where you're invited here because we think you can help this student. Now, even though some of the students that are participating in the meeting may actually be bullying that student. But when they're brought in, they're brought in as, you are not in trouble, you are here to help. And so far, what we've seen is that these students actually are able to connect with the student that's having the problem and realize they are causing the problem, even if they're not saying that out loud. And they come up with solutions that help the student, and they offer to try them. They go and they try them for a week, and we meet again. And then if the bullying student feels comfortable, they actually come back and join the meeting and talk about how things are getting better or not getting better. And we've had some great success as citizens with this. It seems to be remaining the number of bullying incidents, and students that are participating are saying that they are not going to go to school.
So another one of the committees that we have at our school is called our Family Involvement Committee. It used to be called our PTO, and the reason that we changed the name to Family Involvement is because we learned that a lot of our students don't live in the typical mom and dad situation. So family involvement, grandparents, aunts, uncles, cousins, whoever the child lives with, feel free to come to our event. We also hold our family involvement meetings rotating times. So one will be in the morning, the next one will be at night, so that we can get as many families as we can to our meeting. Also, a big part of that committee is planning events for the school, such as we have bingo, we've had a fall fest, we had a back-to-school batch, we're planning a pasta night for next week, as well as we're going to do a spring dance at the end of the year. So it's just a great committee to kind of get the family's voices, as well as also, you know, a great way for the families to come and have some fun while they're at school.
Hi, I'm Stephanie Lissy, first-grade teacher at Montier. I'm part of the restorative committee. I also take part in better lessons training and social-emotional learning, as that's been the big initiative this year to make sure we're establishing a good safe space for all of our students. In the restorative practices, we do our circles. They're both proactive and restorative, where we learn about each student in a safe space, helping them build connections that are so important. And when they build connections, they're helping themselves learn and grow, and you're building the relationships that are very essential. In Better Lessons, some of us are learning how to bring the social-emotional aspect to our classrooms and also help our teams support their classrooms as well.
These are a couple examples of some of the posters that we created and distributed to each teacher on our campus, so that if there are small situations in the classroom, the students have a place for student starters, like how can they resolve their problems? And the students seem to be really receptive and are participating more and more. And we seem to be seeing some positive results.
So student voice is really important on our campus, and we have a couple of our student council members here. I'm going to let Ms. Considio introduce them.
Hi, I'm Faith Madison, here tonight from the fifth-grade student council. We do this twice a month, many events. The council members are elected by student peers and support of the planned fall fest, and we are planning positive neighbor events for each one. So I like to listen to them, share their experiences.
Hi, my name is Good Chapman, and I deserve to be a member of the student council. Some things that the student council get ready for in sixth grade, it really helps to get ready for things that happen in sixth grade, like the student council in sixth grade helps to get ready for it, and you just get better, I think, as soon as you're ready, more hopefully, better at homework and better at work, you just get to homework and hope for more. So I feel a lot of year beginning.
Hi, I'm Melissa Melander, and I am the treasurer of the student council. I was here for the ready-up for the student council.
A little nervous. So this is our entire student council. We have the president, the vice president, the treasurer secretary, and we have representatives from each class. They were all elected, they ran for their office, they gave speeches. So even though Madison was a little nervous, she did a great speech in front of her fifth-grade class. Again, they were elected, and now they plan events each month, so they have a big part of our school. And I just wanted to, before we quickly show you a video, I wanted to end by thanking our staff because we have, you know, like I said, a very large campus, and without the amazing staff coming together to work each and every day for our students and for our community, none of the work would be possible. So really, all of our thanks and gratitude goes to the staff there, meaning that. So we'll leave you with a short little clip on why our students love our campus. I think we have a little technical difficulty. So we'll end this. Thank you.
Thank you for that presentation. Great job. Ms. Moniz, excellent. And teachers and students, thank God. Now we're going to go into recognitions and announcements.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So this is turning into kind of a trend or an activity that we're doing here into our school committee meetings where we're recognizing the tremendous student athletes, students across our amazing district. And tonight, we have some amazing student athletes here with us. We have some student athletes from the track and field team, and we have student athletes from the wrestling team. So if the committee would join me on the other side of the podium here, I'm going to go to the podium and we're going to hand out some awards to some well-deserving student athletes today. So I'm going to start off this evening with our track and field student athletes. So when I call your name, if you could please come over to the podium, I have a certificate for you, and the Wunsocket School Committee would like to congratulate you on your wonderful seasons and awards. So I'm going to start with a young man from the indoor track and field team here at Wunsocket High School. And this young man is a five-time freshman state champion in weight, hammer, discus, indoor, and outdoor shot put. He currently sits as the United States' number-one sophomore in the shot put, weight throw, and hammer throw. He broke the 45-year-old school shot put record at Wunsocket High School. He became the first Rhode Island student athlete to break 60 feet in the shot put in 50 years. And he's the New England champion in the shot put. Would Tariq Robinson O'Hagan please come to the podium? Our next student athlete, also on the Wunsocket High School indoor track and field team. This young man is a World Trophy Invitational Weight Throw Champion. Currently ranks in the United States' number four in both 25-pound and 35-pound weight. He broke school records in the 25 and 35-pound weight, in the weight throw relay, and the weight triathlon. And this young man is the New England champion in the weight throw, Logan Coles. Wow. And let's give them both a congratulations. So behind every great athlete, there's a great coach, or there are great coaches. And here at Wunsocket, at Wunsocket High School, we are very, very proud of our Wunsocket High School track and field coach, who pushes his student athletes not only to excel on the playing field or on the track, but I know he pushes them to excel in the classroom. And that's what it's all about. It's not about being a great athlete, it's about being a great person and a great student and a great athlete. So I'd like to have Mark Piet come to the podium. See, here in Wunsocket, one sport's not just enough for us to recognize. We have great athletes across the board, no matter the season, no matter the sport. So we're going to recognize the Wunsocket High School wrestling team next. The Wunsocket High School wrestling team, amazing. They won undefeated this year, they won the division, they're the division champions in 2019 and 2020. So it's not the 2019-2020 season, it's the 2019 season and the 2020 season. So again, tremendous athletes here, but they're more than just athletes, they're student athletes. And I want to congratulate all of them, and I'm going to start with Jason Corrales. Kobe Alvarez. Jamie Alcindor. Thomas Murphy. Caleb Lambert. Hayden DePaul. Yes, you're right, Hayden needs to get over that shyness. Jacob Costanza. Tyrell Parsons Mitchell. Sean Anlund. Jemel Cologne. Sally Ujjo. Anthony Diaz. Sebastian Sadapam. Gavin Alair. Natasha Rodriguez. Asher Masri. Kayden Montez. Jonathan Perez. Abigail Dumont. Patrick Sukamasi. Tyler Utley. Austin Trudeau. Colleen McDowell. And again, as I said, with respect to the wonderful student athletes that are on our track and field team, our wonderful wrestling athletes would not be where they are without the hard work of the coaches, the assistant coaches and volunteers that work with them on a daily basis. So our first assistant, volunteer assistant coach is Rogilio Gonzalez. Volunteer assistant coach Josh Hidalgo. This must be family here. Volunteer assistant coach Kelsey Hidalgo. Volunteer assistant coach Tam Hidalgo. Assistant coach Damian Parada. And last, but certainly not least, head coach Matt Morrow. So again, I want to just, again, just reiterate the wonderful students and student athletes we have at Wunsocket High School in this community. We have so much to be proud of in Wunsocket and at Wunsocket High School. So let's give all of our student athletes and their coaches.
Again, why don't we give all of our student athletes and their coaches another round of applause. Now, recognition of all this wonderful gathering, Chef Paul and his chefs have prepared some goodies for us, so I'll make a motion to take a five to 10-minute recess at 7:40. Is there a second? All in favor? We're on recess, come enjoy. But there's still plenty of room left. I'll make a motion to come out of recess at 7:51 PM. Is there a second?
Second.
What do you think overall?
Chairman Bojeh?
Yes.
Vice Chair Burke?
Yes.
Mrs. Capwell?
Yes.
Mrs. Nato?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I wanted to just make a few other comments before we move into the pool of minutes. I'd like to recognize our athletic director, Nancy Giordano, who, as I said when I was announcing our student athletes, that behind great athletes are great coaches, and behind great athletes and great coaches are great athletic directors. And I want to thank Mrs. Giordano for her devotion and commitment to Wunsocket High School and to the Wunsocket High School Athletic Department. I would also like to begin to recognize our Wunsocket area career and technical school, our culinary students led by Chef Paul. Let's give them a round of applause. And I'd also like to commend and recognize the citizens' cotheer administrators, faculty and staff, and wonderful students for the job that they do on a daily basis at the Citizens' Cotheer Campus.
Now we move to the approval of minutes.
There's a certain city in Massachusetts that calls itself the City of Champions. I would have to say after the last month, two-month tear of Wunsocket between our boys' basketball team, our girls' basketball team, our football team, our wrestling team, our track and field team, that I think we should be renaming ourselves of Wunsocket as the City of Champions.
Anyone else? Now let's go on to the approval of minutes. I'll make a motion to approve the February 26, 2020 open session minutes. Is there a second?
Second.
Are there corrections, deletions, substitutions? There are none, back to the meeting.
Chairman Bojeh?
Yes.
Vice Chair Burke?
Yes.
Mrs. Capwell?
Yes.
Mrs. Nato?
Yes.
Next, I'll make a motion to discuss and approve the consent agenda. Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any school committee member that would like to take any of the items out of order or discuss any particular one? There are none, back to the meeting.
Chairman Bojeh?
Yes.
Vice Chair Burke?
Yes.
Mrs. Capwell?
Yes.
Mrs. Nato?
Yes.
Mrs. Hidalgo?
Yes.
Next, we'll go on to the superintendent's report, back to the meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm going to begin with the update on the strategic planning process here in Wunsocket. I'd like to let the committee know and the community know that so far, we have had two focus groups that have met. First focus group was made up of parents and community members and members of the Wunsocket School Committee. They met on March 2nd, on Monday, March 2nd, and on Tuesday, March 3rd, members of the Wunsocket Education Department staff and leadership team also met for their focus groups. During the work, the work that was produced by the focus groups were looking at our districts holistically and looking at our strengths, our challenges and the opportunities that we see here for our students and for our staff in Wunsocket. The next part of the process is the data collection. Myself, Dr. Holt, Mrs. DiRiso and other directors are in the process of putting together data for our facilitators. They are going to be using this data when they meet with the steering committee, the district steering committee, and that data is going to be, you know, anywhere from our attendance data, our ICAS data, our PSAT SAT data, survey works data, at least placement classes data, our STAR reading and math data, and our STAR literacy data, just to name a few. So we're going to be sharing a lot of data with them because, as you know, this process is really driven by data. The next step after we provide them with the data, as I said, the steering committee will have one meeting, that'll be in April, and at that meeting, it's going to be primarily made up of folks from outside of the school park. So it would be made up of some of our community organizers within Wunsocket and other folks within the community that work with us but aren't in our school. They, at that meeting, they're going to be looking at our mission, vision and core values. The next part of the process is going to be the strategic planning committee, which will take the data and the information from the two focus groups that have met as well as the steering committee, and that group will be made up of folks from within the district, administrators, teachers, staff, directors, and they're actually going to be charged with creating the goals and objectives of our three-year strategic plan. So that's an update, Mr. Chairman, and members of the school committee on our strategic planning process. Anybody have any questions this time?
We're moving right along.
We are.
So once we hit to the second phase, then we'll take a look at that, what progress is going.
We are. My next agenda item is I would like to discuss with the community, an update on the Wunsocket Education Department and the measures that we're taking to protect our students and our staff from coronavirus. So about a week ago, I sent a letter out to all the staff and parents outlining what we've done and will continue to do here in the district with respect to ensuring that we have, you know, healthy, safe environments for all of our students and all of our staff. Our facilities department, led by Mr. Natariani, they've been working very hard to ensure that our classrooms, our schools, our common areas are disinfected, with the appropriate cleaning solutions that would be necessary for kilogermes. They're really focusing on the common areas and the common areas of touch, if you will, you know, doorknobs, light switches, railings, doors entering our schools as well. I believe this weekend, they're going to commit to all of our schools and they're going to clean all the desks as well. We'd actually done that about maybe a month or so ago. Mr. Natariani had sent the facilities and custodial staff in to do that work with respect to desks in all of our schools, so they're going to continue that work this weekend. And the message that I sent out to parents and staff included measures that are recommended by the Rhode Island Department of Health, and they are, you know, get your flu shot, wash your hands thoroughly throughout the day with soap and water or alcohol-based hand gel, which we have, all of our buildings are stocked with soap. We got some, or we received some information that there might be some faucets that might not be working, and Mr. Natariani and the facilities department got right on that and those have been repaired.
Yes.
So we're, you know, we're ensuring that all of our bathrooms, we're providing the necessary soap for our students and staff to use. If you're coughing or sneezing, you know, sneeze or cough into your elbow. From our nurses, Diane Engels, we've met with her a few times, and any student should stay home if they are vomiting or they have diarrhea that lasts 48 hours, they should, symptoms are not subsiding, they should stay home. Students should stay home until their temperatures stay below 100 degrees and without fever, reducing medication for 40 days. reducing medication for 48 hours. Just in general, if you're sick, students or staff should stay home from school. Avoid touching eyes, nose, and mouth. Get plenty of sleep. And again, this goes out to parents as well, as we're doing this in the district, like keeping surfaces clean by wiping them down with a household cleaner, you know, certainly parents at home, little children or toys and things like that. So that was sent out last week, and again, that was meant to just update the staff and parents to let them know that we're being vigilant here in the Wunsakit Education Department, and our number-one goal is to ensure the health and safety of all of our students and our staff. In addition to that, my team has met with Durham Bus Company. We've talked to them about the measures that they're taking to ensure that their buses are clean. They are going through a process as well in terms of disinfecting seats, disinfecting different parts of the bus, the handrails, and things like that. We've met with Sidexo, met with Shalvy. Sidexo has actually sent out a letter to their staff letting them know of what precautions they need to take, both in the kitchen and outside when they're working with our students directly. We've had a meeting with our after-school program, CCF, and some of our daycare providers. So I wanted to make sure that we're all on the same page and that we're all providing information to families that's number-one consistent, and number-two is consistent with what the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention and the Rhode Island Department of Health are sending out to all the school districts. I've had some weekly standing calls with the Rhode Island Department of Health. They're scheduled every Wednesday. I just had one today, 2:00 to 2:30. I also have a hotline number that I have in case there are any questions, which I've used that a few times. I sent out a memo to our principals, letting them know that information about the coronavirus needs to come from my office and not the schools directly because I want to make sure that there's consistency with the message and the messages that are going out. And I also asked them if there are questions that their staff or parents may have, that they, you know, turn to me, and I can try to either answer it or I can try to get an answer for them. So the important thing is that we're vigilant and that there's a constant and similar message, consistent message that's going out to folks in the community. Today, the governor had a press conference with the director of the Department of Health, where they discussed a variety of things. One of the things that they talked about is that the Department of Education will be sending to districts, to superintendents guidelines or a set of guidance in terms of what districts should be doing with respect to field trips and any other types of events where you would have a large congregation of people, more than 250 people, that would be in one confined area. So that will be coming out. I suspect if it hasn't come out during this meeting, it's supposed to come out by tomorrow. They're also going to provide districts with guidance around if school districts need to close, what plans are in place, what plans can districts put in place with respect to virtual learning or distance learning. A few years ago, there was legislation that was passed which gave districts an opportunity to submit plans to the Department of Education about utilizing and creating virtual learning plans, specifically really for snow days. At the time, and even up until the present time, there might have been a handful of districts that submitted plans, and those districts' plans were not approved. So RIDE is submitting to us guidelines so that we can, in the event that we would need to plan for something like this, we can put something together. We had a meeting today. Chairman Bojek was in attendance, and we basically, and it was those folks in the district who have been part of these plans that were put together from the beginning of this coronavirus. And we've talked about where we go from here, and we had the conversation about, you know, what plans would be put together as we move forward. Just one of the challenges of if we are out of school for a period of time is, you know, you hear about a lot of these distance learning plans, colleges and universities, and in theory, it's a great idea, but in practice, there are a lot of unanswered questions. For example, what do you do with students who require assistance with their classwork? You know, what do we do for our differently-able students who might have a resource teacher, might have a personal care assistant, who are assisting them in the classroom, helping them with their learning? Do we just send information home to them at home and, you know, hopefully get it? So there are a lot of questions that really need to be answered, and again, I know that a lot of universities are doing this, and I think it's much easier for universities to do this because much of the communication between professors and students goes through, you know, virtual multimedia, whether it's a Chromebook or, you know, what have you, a laptop. One of the things we have to consider here in Wunsakit is, do our students, all of our students, have access to Wi-Fi at home? Well, they don't. Do all of our students have access to a Chromebook? Our elementary students do not because we don't have one-to-one initiatives at the elementary grades. At the secondary level, our middle school students have a one-to-one platform. They're not permitted to take them home, and at the high school, we have a one-to-one, and they're permitted to take them home. So you might say, well, you have the Chromebooks, this is easy. Well, it's easy if the teacher, and this is not a knock against any of our teachers because not all of them have Google Classroom that they're using with their students. Some do, and we've been working hard, you know, our technology department with our blended learning coach and our curriculum instructional coach have been working hard with staff to get them up to speed so that they can create Google Classroom, but not all have, and it's not a requirement in our district. So I think that there are some things that we're going to have to consider as a team here before, you know, we talk about potentially putting together a plan and submitting it to RIDE. So again, you know, we've been working really hard. I think we've been doing a really great job of communicating with the folks in our community and our stakeholders that work directly with our children to make sure that the environment that they're in, whether it's on a school bus, in a classroom, wherever, is a safe environment for them. And that's all I have. Chairman, if you have any questions, I would be happy to.
Anyone else?
Mrs. Capwell. Thank you so much, Chairman. In general, what type of volume are you seeing as far as questions, concerns coming back from parents and how those are being elevated to that level of view?
So I haven't personally received any questions from parents. I believe that, there's one administrator that emailed me that did just today the fact that there was a question that a parent had, so I'm going to reach out to that administrator tomorrow and try to provide her with an answer, and I certainly will reach out to the parent myself with respect to that. There was another concern about at the high school as well, and that's one that we're also working on, getting the correct information out to the parent. The questions that I've had have been more around staff, and, you know, a staff member who might have a family member who was in a setting where somebody was tested positive. So those, I've had maybe a handful, maybe three or four, probably not even four, maybe three, I would say. And with each one, I've reached out to the hotline number, which is the Department of Health, and they've been able to provide me with guidance with respect to, you know, how to address those situations. And they've gone well. They've been fine.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Mr. Chairman.
Vice Chair Burke.
Dr. McGee, you know, in the news recently, there's been a lot of talk about colleges, college athletic programs, and even the professional athletic programs canceling or not having. Has the Rhode Island Athletic School presented any instructions to the schools? Because I know stock next Monday, spring sports are down in the mall.
So the conference call that I was in on today, Tom Mesznaty, who's the executive director of the Athletic School, was also on that conference call, and he asked, he asked some questions for the Department of Health, which they're supposed to provide him with some guidelines and some guidance specific to the questions that you're asking. And he is supposed to, after he convened with them, which may well have been today, after the call, we were going to get together to talk. I would imagine that he'll be sending out guidance to athletic directors and to principals and to superintendents as well.
Dr. McGee, Vice Chair Burke, at the governor's conference that I read today, they're going to address the sports very soon, so we should be here if we're ready. They're putting guidelines together because, as you said, spring sports are the end of the year. So it's definitely an issue, and we have to move to the.
And one of the guidelines that they've issued is if there's an event that's closed in, so if there's an event like within a gym or within an auditorium of 250 or more people, the governor and the director of the Department of Health has said they're to be canceled.
But the most likely, the sports are outside, maybe because of my size, it could be a benefit.
I'm sure when those guidelines come down, when they're established, they'll let athletic directors and superintendents know.
Good thinking.
Anyone else? I'll make a motion to receive and place on file a superintendent's report. Is there a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Let's go on to the school subcommittee reports, the staff facilities update. Mrs. Nato and I attended recently a facilities update, a subcommittee meeting. I'll turn it over to our director for just a summary of the ideas that we talked about.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So at the subcommittee meeting, Durham School Services did a brief presentation on transportation numbers and cluster of students surrounding the elementarys, middle schools, and high schools. We're going to go back to the subcommittee and find the numbers in a very nice meeting, and then we've got discussions in terms of how to make transportation choices for the whole school year, in terms of facilities projects, some of the work orders, work order system. We are now hovering around 50 work orders, as we discussed in the last meeting, the last update. We're in close to the point where we're going to change the work order system. We talked about pre-payerly childhood classroom locations here in the city in terms of the need for the future. We talked about having next-gen services, the heating company, heat company coming to provide a presentation to the subcommittee regarding our systems here in the district. We talked about speed bumps that the citizens' cohtier campus, which is a speed bump that will come in this week, will be installed in the very near future. We talked to discuss about RFP associates between Paris and Cohtier Elementary Schools regarding drainage issues and the fact that they think this is only an elementary school that has drainage issues on the side of buildings. We talked about, we've been seeing an RFP from Wunsakit High School scoreboards and gymnasiums along with a RFP for making the exterior of the Korean Technical Center. We talked about access control in the tech center building, childhood room. We did a brief update of information that I received from the city regarding solar panels that Korean Technical Center parking lot. We talked about a future proposal for the power night answer room program at Korean Technical Center. We talked about door lamps, district wide. We talked about the HVAC system that's here at the middle school, which is a little stuck in here this evening. I think it may increase the weather a little bit, the weather's getting here. We talked about Savoy Legal Project, how it's completed, is it going to do window saving in the very near future on the approaches. We also talked about the parking lot management, in particular, any kind of parking signs which have arrived and will replace initial any kind of parking spaces or designated initial any kind of parking spaces in all of our school buildings. We talked about Coleman, apparent request to install a guardrail on the student entrance to the parking lot side. We did a brief review of five-day capital plan in terms of just where we have our steps for that, and the fact that we've shared the initial draft proposal with all of the principals. And the final topic we discussed was playground inspection. I have a report that we cleaned mulch and we started dispersing it to three playgrounds for new schools taken here today, and we're dispersing mulch and they have locations. So those were discussed and considered.
Thank you, Mr. Natarianni. It would be very interesting to try to get those playgrounds done since the weather's been so accommodating in March, so it was sort of better, and I know we're working very hard on getting that done. Anyone else have any comments?
Vice Chair Burke, a question. Was Harris School one of the schools that you're doing some extra work at?
Yes, Vice Chairman, that's one of the schools, and actually, as the chairman noted, the good weather has prompted individuals to want to use the playground, but the good weather's what we were waiting for to actually be working in the playground. So now that the good weather's approaching, we've been able to get in the facility staff and send the whole group in at once. So we placed mulch in Burnet because that's where it was easiest to see the mulch first today. But tomorrow, we'll be spreading mulch at the Harris Playground, probably by the big day. We've got some cleanup work to do, then we'll spread the mulch. And the last thing that we'll do is we'll go and ramp that in a few days quickly. There are some equipment deficiencies in some of the equipment that's broken over the years that we're going to try and repair ourselves and house or at least bring it to a safe condition so that they can use the playgrounds as quickly as possible. So I'm hopeful in the next couple of weeks, we should have that stuff taken care of and being used and used. Again, this wasn't something planned. We did an inspection in late November, and these are things that we encountered.
And we're also putting the cohtier playground as well, aren't we?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. So Harris will be next, and then once we've completed Harris, then we will be trucking over mulch over to the cohtier playground.
Anyone else? I'll make a motion to receive and place on file the facilities update. Is there a second?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Next, we'll go on to the policy updating. Mrs. Kepiscus.
The policies subcommittee met on March 3rd. We discussed three policies which appear on tonight's agenda, the internet filtering policy, the threat assessment policy, and the homeschool policy. And I'll defer any information on those until we reach them. The other thing we reviewed was the preparation of a quarterly review or update of our policies as to how they appear on the website. The policies are jumbled at best, difficult to find, required to dig in two places, one of which is available on the website, one of which is 100 pages long but available on the website. So we're looking to make those changes. That's going to take some time. We're just starting the process and beginning the discussion as to how it's going to be formatted, and that's going to be the next thing we're going to discuss at our next policy subcommittee meeting. At the most recent subcommittee meeting, we made a decision to eliminate public comment policy, eliminate public comment on the policy subcommittee, and offer the option of providing emails or comments at the whole committee meeting, certainly when policies come before. It's becoming burdensome and bogging down the school process subcommittee in terms of trying to get policies out of subcommittee. We can revisit that policy if we deem it necessary in order to allow limited public comment or free public comment, but in particular, the homeschooling can be bogged down with regard to public comment. We spent almost two hours discussing that particular policy at one meeting. The next meeting is April 7th, 2020. We're going to begin a little later at 4:15 to accommodate the principals who are attending building meetings. The meeting will be here at the Wunsakit Middle School in Hamlet, April 124. Again, that's April 7th, 2020.
Thank you. I know we're going to be discussing and improving three policies in a short while. Is anyone has any thoughts, comments on the report? I'll make a motion to accept the policy updating. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Back to you, Mrs. Kepiscus. For CILAC, CILAC report.
The CILAC met on March 5th. Presentation was made by a woman named Deandra from the Rodent Center who's looking for foster homes in Wunsakit for children who are in need of therapeutic foster care. These are children who have special needs, behavior or otherwise. They're the more challenging kids who are being bounced around. They're looking for parents. There was a review of the requirements. It's not an adoption program. Non-traditional families are certainly considered and accepted. Rodent places the treatment level children. The children need more support than your typical children. So although it's associated with these two way apps, we're invited by Rodent. If anybody, there's no cost associated. If anybody, there's no cost associated with programming it licensed. If you're interested, the chair of those CILAC has folders with information. Under old business, we discussed the parent support group meetings, which happen monthly. Some updates to the CILAC webpage. In this, we may get some further information put on adding some resources for parents. CILAC is still looking for ideas or presentations for workshops. Under new business, we discussed questions around latreancy policy as it relates to mentally fragile or chronically ill children. And weren't sure that each case is looked at case by case. And having latency officers involved in these situations does seem like an incredible waste of resources. We discussed the deep cleaning of mentally fragile and immunocompromised students with immuni, immun, yeah, community compromised systems. And Mr. Norbatty advised that the reviewing policies and procedures and additional overtime has been authorized to deal with the flu and other germs in these classrooms as well as all of the classrooms. There was apparent issues with regards to the local level reading books in the middle school, and it was determined that they were the only students. And it was also a question about specialized students being excluded from field trips. And the destination, Dr. Sullivan advised us of specialized students actually going on field trips and general students. The CILAC meeting for a group, which would have been on the first Thursday, is canceled. It's on schedule for April 2nd. This conflict for the chair and myself. Dr. Sullivan advised that you'd be seeking to be in these scenes in the Bay Harbor program, and we'll be discussing that further on our agenda. Dr. McGee again recommends student planning, advised that projections for next year are underway in terms of planning classrooms, including the not looking to the general assembly's apparent intent to put a student cap of 20 students and raise page one and two without providing any additional planning, because the people need staff and building space. We don't have. We discussed the handicap party. We discussed the dog therapy issue. And the next meeting of the CILAC is the cancellation of the homeroom meeting we're working on in March, excuse me, May 7th, 2020 at the Woodside Elementary School in Hamlet, April 124 at 6:30. Please enter through the rear of the building through door three, close to Hamlet Avenue.
Thank you, Mrs. Kaviskas. Anyone have comments? Make a motion, receive and place on file a CILAC update. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Next, we'll go into the facilities update and then the technology update. And they're all yours, Mr. Matariyan.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So I won't cover, there's a brief stating in the memo. We got a long fire, so I think that we just already covered that topic. So under facilities update, you'll see the three attached forms. If I bring your attention to the first form, which indicates the volume breakdown business that occurred or has happened in some fashion over the last 30 days. You can see that they've closed out 70 work orders, 19 new, four waiting for a contractor, eleven are signed up to staff, six have been declined, three are waiting for vendors, three, two have been resolved. And then we have some duplicate tickets, some in progress, and some more parts are on order. So again, as indicated, the update for facilities subcommittee earlier, all the work order volumes significantly decreased. We're trying to keep a close eye on it. To be frank, when you I expect of the next update, it probably will climb up higher again in terms of the work order being outstanding because we're now redirecting our staff to spend the vast majority of the days cleaning because of the coronavirus. But we will still be responding to any emergencies and any work orders that we need to be fixing or in what kind of fashion. The second report indicates the average response time to close out a work order and we're at 11 days. I suspect that that will be reduced as the months progress. Again, it'll probably be a slight uptick next month. But eventually I think that will go down because we are responding in a much quicker fashion and others that we look through the backlog. And the last report is the feedbacks report, which I'm happy to point out that in the past, many times we didn't see any feedback at all. I'm very happy, very proud of the facilities staff because all of the feedback has been positive. So you can see that of all the work orders they've closed out, again, this is what staff do in this, this reflects upon what they're doing out there. We personally have about 15, 16 positive reviews of the work performance that the facilities staff has done over the last 30 days. So they've done a very good job. And it's all God, it's the crew, it's the depot, who supervise us, who do fantastic work. And so we still aim for that. That, that concludes the report for the facilities, Mr. Chairman.
Anyone have any thoughts? I want to congratulate you and your staff for doing such a great job because I know it's been a long road and, and things have improved. And you've had a lot of work over the last year. So it's nice to see that we're getting positive comments.
It is nice. They do a very good job. They're very good, very caring people. People really take pride in the district.
Now I'll make a motion, receive and place on file a facilities update. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Matariyan, technology.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So as the memo states, we're currently prepping for the phone state assessments who are being administered on the technology devices in the district. Dr. McGee, we used to earlier the Chromebooks. We're currently prepping for RYCAST, the DLM, the often assessment and the next generation science assessment. So those are the things that we're prepping on and making sure that Wi-Fi is working properly and all devices are updated, just to throw in the air as we're going through the devices. We're disinfecting them, replacing all ways. Then we're also working on for the month of March, data reports that we do to RY specifically that we'd be interested in the fact that we're doing the March snapshot for funding, which we're preparing. Very much interested in as well. And this particular report is what drives our state, this report in the October 1st snapshot report are what the RY has combined and we've gone into the funding formula drives hopefully positive use of the district. In addition to that, we're also looking at the maintenance reports with regard to him and her in birthplace status. The textbook report, which is not something we really, we really handle. It's a daily order that's due, but that's actually something like that in the home's office and special evaluations, which we're going to have to solve in the office. In addition to the state reports, you'll find the attached work order breakdown and standard report in terms of volume. The technology department for the last 30 days has closed out 324 work orders, resolved 19, declined 15, there are 15 currently assigned, seven new, four duplicate and several are in progress, awaiting input from the person's requesting service or waiting for a vendor to respond. So it's been a very busy 30 days for the technology department. In terms of statistics, we are back down to averaging approximately two days to resolve work orders, which is nice to see because the number did climb for a period of time, but we got two new technicians on staff and they're doing an absolutely fantastic job and they've gotten that number way down. And then we have the satisfaction survey. As you can see on the report, everything with the exception of like, I think it's either one or two. I apologize, I don't have glasses tonight, but at least one work order that there was a not satisfied response. And this one I looked into and it was actually an error on part. So we did resolve the issue and contacted the teacher. But we thought we left a cable for the teacher. I believe that's what it was, but we left it in the wrong order. I mean, as well, the circumstance was on this one. And that, that concludes my report of technology, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Director. Anyone, questions, comments?
Three.
I'll make a motion, receive and place on file a technology update. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So if you don't want to finish your business, let's go on to new business. I'll make a motion to discuss and approve the homeschooling policy for first passage. And as some of the folks spoke tonight, we've been at this policy and we need a second. Is there a second?
Second.
We've been at this policy, as you know, for quite some time. And it's a very important policy. It's very serious. We want to make sure we do the best we can with it. We've taken, we've received several emails from parents and we've taken that into consideration. And we have received the Homeschool Legal Defense Association letter, which has been incorporated, what we've done. And so, and here we are. So I'm going to turn it over to Mrs. Kaviskas.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The policies subcommittee has been reviewing the homeschooling policy for the last, we've done it over the last two to three meetings, finally coming out of the committee at our work student meeting on the third. Essentially, this all came out, it's my understanding, as a result of my conversation with Dr. McGee. McGee indicated to me that he and Dr. Holt had met with some homeschooling, parent homeschooling, parent organizations with regard to questions and issues and concerns regarding our existing homeschool policy and homeschool guidelines, that the documents seem to be separated and some are inconsistent. So as a result, he made a recommendation to me that it was something we shouldn't review in policy subcommittee. So that's how it came to policy. And we had been working on it, actually started to discuss it when Joe Cooper was our councilman. And it got put by the wayside when Joe left and I went back at it. Essentially, we've gone through, I think, probably five to six drafts. You have, I think you have on your computers, but I know I sent the email, the most recent draft, which is a little bit of additional red line language, deleting some language, correcting some language. One of them addresses one of the issues raised by one of the parents tonight with regard to the language and the beginning of the philosophy as the government, the education of students and public education. Basically, it's been removed and the section is coming from statute. The two other issues that have been raised with regard to the number view of construction including the number of hours of construction per day, as well as issues regarding competency, how the instructor to teach the school and their willingness to do so diligently consistently in a good faith. Those are both, they raised these issues. We have looked into them. We discussed them thoroughly. We have, I have also reached out to legal counsel to ask for an opinion and some support for that opinion as to whether or not they comply with Rhode Island law. I've been assured micro that they do, and I'm comfortable with the fact that they do comply with Rhode Island state law. There are, in addition to the red lines, there are three additional amendments that I would like to propose tonight as a result of our decision to provide that the department will not permit homeschool students to enroll in any regular educational programming during the year in which their homeschooling is approved. We need to delete the paragraph that addresses field trips because students would not be going on those field trips if they're not enrolled in our classes. That's at the bottom of page three. At the top of page four, we should delete language regarding conferences with principals, as was what we brought to our attention by one of the homeschooling acts, that that is not appropriate in light of the fact that we're being students in those schools. And the third has been raised by you, Mr. Chair, is with regard to participation in athletics. If the students are not participating in any other activities in the district, including participation in our curriculum or participation in field trips, participation in athletics should be excluded as well. I had a discussion with Dr. McGee and asked how many students would be impacted by that. And he indicated to me that it's not many, the numbers probably are less than handful over the last few years that there are the students that have been requested to participate in athletics. And I did some research and reached counsel again to ask if we could legally do that. And it is a discretion of the district, although there is guidance from RY that encourages participation. We have the discretion to say whether you're in for it all or you're out for it all. And we made the decision to go with you're out for it all. And if you do, that should include athletics, as you indicated, Mr. Chair. So those are the three amendments I would like to propose, making I both want to discuss them individually or as a group.
What is your pleasure? Do we have any comments? It seems to me you've, you've said pretty much what, what the subcommittee has dealt with, what we've heard from parents in our discussions throughout the days and the weeks. I think that's where we want to be. So those, if you, but.
So I formally move to amend the policy to eliminate participation in athletics, to eliminate field trips and to eliminate conferences with the principal?
Is there a second?
Second.
Any other discussion? Dr. McGee?
Chairman Bojek?
Yes.
Vice Chair Burke?
Yes.
Mrs. Capwell?
Yes.
Mrs. Nato?
Yes.
Mrs. Kaviskas?
Yes. And now do we need to vote on the initial policy?
Yes.
We need to vote on the red line.
That's correct.
No, that's already included in the.
That's already included.
Yes. Because that's the latest, that's the latest that we had. So we'll make an adjustment to the red line, which would be additional red line. But that's, it's come.
And if I may, Mr. Chair, out of fairness, I just want to make sure everyone knows that I took the liberty of taking some copies of the red line copy with me in case our homeschool parents here tonight. And I did provide you with the copies of those additional red lines.
I'm glad you did. I mean, as you should have, but we have. So I'm glad you have. Anything else on homeschooling? Let's go on to discuss, we have a moment? I'll, I'll write.
I would move to amend the policy, to approve the policy as will be amended.
Second. Anyone else? Dr. McGee?
Chairman Bojek?
Yes.
Vice Chair Burke? Yes. Mrs. Capwell?
Yes.
Mrs. Nato?
Yes.
Mrs. Kaviskas?
Yes.
Next, I'll make a motion to discuss and approve the threat assessment policy for first passage. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Dr. McGee?
Chairman Bojek?
Yes.
Sorry, Chairman, I was too late to the mic. I said I was too late to the mic. Actually, I do have one, just one thought or discussion that I'd like to bring up. And not necessarily with respect to any of the language within the document, but just as a thought is, I was reading through about the effectiveness and how to make the most of a policy in this respect. And a lot of times, if on what I feel I see or have heard, that in many cases, the students are the grassroots or understanding of when these types of threats may or may not be happening. And how do we ensure that they feel safe and encouraged to bring forth when they're hearing of these type of threats amongst their own peers? I, I, I think that it's worth discussing, if not necessarily in this meeting, but maybe at a future time. I just want to put some thoughtfulness around. How do we make sure that those that may be the most in the know feel empowered to escalate appropriately when they're hearing of potential threats?
I think that's going to be, that's going to be interesting because if there is a threat and it's not obvious and who's going to make it, who's going to have the courage to do it, whether it's the parent, a teacher, a student. And so it's going to be a matter of encouraging and letting the principals know, the staff know that one of that, the, the threat team, assessment team has got to be vigilant, looking for things. But there's not going to be a surefire answer, I think, I believe. I think it's going to be a process. But I think it's worthy of discussion. Dr. McGee?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think it's establishing that culture and that climate in our schools that, as you said, Chairman, that encourages students to, if they see something, if they hear something, to go to an adult.
Anyone else? Dr. McGee?
Chairman Bojek?
Yes.
Vice Chair Burke?
Yes.
Mrs. Capwell?
Yes.
Mrs. Nato?
Yes.
Mrs. Kaviskas?
Yes.
Next, I'll make a motion to discuss and approve the internet filtering policy for first passage. Is there a second?
Second.
Mrs. Kaviskas, go ahead.
Your honor, oh my God, I'm so sorry. Mr. Chair?
Yes.
We did review this policy and in discussion, we did determine that there is basically a typographical type of change that needs to be made. Wherever references need to the technology committee, contribute the technology subcommittee. So I would move that those amendments be made before we give it second passage. But I would actually move at this point to make that amendment to change technology, committee, technology subcommittee.
I'll second that. And please, Dr. McGee?
Chairman Bojek?
Yes.
Vice Chair Burke? Yes. Mrs. Capwell?
Yes.
Mrs. Nato?
Yes.
Mrs. Kaviskas?
Yes.
I'll make a motion to, to approve the policy as amended. Is there a second?
Second.
Dr. McGee?
Chairman Bojek?
Yes.
Vice Chair Burke?
Yes.
Mrs. Capwell?
Yes.
Mrs. Nato?
Yes.
Mrs. Kaviskas?
Yes.
Next, I'll make a motion to discuss and approve the 2020, 2021 district's school calendar for First Passage. Is there a second?
Second.
Dr. McGee?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Would you like me to explain a little bit, or just, we just want to take a, take a vote?
You want to take a couple of minutes to explain what we're looking at?
Sure. Sure. So what you have on your computers is the proposed 2020, 2021 school calendar, district calendar with the West Side Education Department. There really, there's really no differences to this, to this calendar, as you can see from year to year. Labor Day is later this year, but we would still start before Labor Day, which would be September 2nd, which would actually be the first day for students to commit. Our district orientation would be held on August 31st, excuse me, and Professional Development Day would be September 1st. So beyond the fact that we're just a little later, and we usually are just by a few days, there really aren't many differences at all. Mr. Chairman?
Vice Chair Burr?
What's interesting about this calendar is that this year is an election year, and there are three days where schools will be closed for elections. So that doesn't give you a lot of legal room to look for any of the possibilities, a couple of days or other. And just thinking, oh, we should hope that there are three days where schools will be closed for elections.
And the last day of school is projected to be June 17.
We're not going to have wood.
Hopefully, you know, we don't have a lot of snow days, so we push it to the next week or, I mean, in some years we've had large amounts of snow days, which has pushed us to almost the last week of June, so hopefully not going to happen.
Dr. McGee, one thing, consistent with prior years, I would ask that when time comes in April and May, where we have awards night, fest, none of those are scheduled on school committee night, because there are several, there were many years that I recall that we couldn't attend.
Exactly.
Because they were, events were held at school committees, so I'd like to make sure that that's a half hour.
I've already addressed it, so I send out a weekly superintendent's field memo to all administrators, and in that field memo, I specify to principals not to schedule any type of award ceremony or graduation on school committee evenings.
Thank you. Anyone else? Dr. McGee, overall?
Chairman Porche?
Yes.
Vice Chair Burr?
Yes.
Mrs. Capwell?
Yes.
Mrs. Nato?
Yes.
Mrs. Kapiskas?
Yes.
Next, I'll make a motion to discuss, to create a new focus, alternative therapeutic environment, fate classroom at Villanova Middle School. Is there a second?
Second.
Dr. McGee?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So as you will remember, a few years ago, we established two fate classrooms, one in each middle school, and those, the purpose of those classrooms was to provide an educational setting for our students who primarily exhibited behaviors that might otherwise require an out-of-district placement. So it's taken a few years for both of those programs to really strengthen and become stable, and we're at the point now where we have 12 students in the program at Villanova Middle School, and we have nine students in the Hamlet program. And again, as I said, in the conversations that I've had with Dr. Sullivan, with both middle school principals, and really just myself, being in those classrooms and seeing how well they're, they're working now, we are looking to bring back a number of students that are in out-of-district placements right now, that we feel, that Dr. Sullivan and her team feel as though are ready to return to, not necessarily a general education setting, but to return to this, this program, which will best, you know, serve their needs, both behaviorally and socially, emotionally, and educationally. So what you have here is you have two, two sheets here. The first, I believe, is the, lists the number of students and their former placements, and the cost per day at each of those placements for the students that we, that we had in out-of-district placements. Now, we have more than just these students that are here, but we brought back a total of five students into both of the fate classrooms. And the cost of those students, the out-of-district cost per year would be $227,737.01. And you take the cost per day, and you multiply that by the number of days that they would be there. If you go down below that, there's a list of, there are three students, obviously not names, but there are three students that we would project could return to both middle schools, and it lists their current placement, and it also designates the cost per day. Taking that cost per day would equal to, during the course of the year, $126,608.01. If you go to the second sheet, which is the fiscal impact, what we have here is you have the students that currently are back to the district, which is the five that I just described a second ago on the first sheet, that list the cost savings, $227,737.01. If you begin, go down to the second part, it talks of the three that we would bring back, and the cost per year would be $126,608.01. If you look at opening up a third classroom, the cost, fiscal impact, would be, we would, we would be expanding to one teacher, and we're looking at bachelory step three, which would be $74,511. We would need one more behavior interventionist, which is contracted through an outside service, outside company, that would be $42,930. And the supplies that we would need to, the estimated cost of supplies to open up that room would be $2,500. The total expense would be $119,941.01 even. So if you take that and you compare that to the cost to the district, keeping these three students in and out of district placement, the savings, the net savings would be $6,667.01. So that's, that's the fiscal impact that we would be looking at by opening up an additional classroom and bringing back three students. Now, that doesn't include the students at the middle school, again, as, as we're moving forward, students who are sort of in between the, the, the most restrictive environment we have here versus an out-of-district placement. This again falls between the, the least restrictive environment and going out of district. So if we have more students that would potentially go out of district, the other two classrooms, they've really kind of exceeded capacity. We would have this third classroom where we potentially could educate our students before we send them out of district.
When I look at this, Dr. McGee, it says $6,000 saving, which is 3%, so basically it's a wash for this particular year.
Correct.
It's a wash. But I think the key to, for me, is you're looking forward. So how many additional students could we put in that third classroom? And maybe this goes to Dr. Sullivan. How do we expand that classroom? Because if nothing changes, we really haven't saved much of that amount.
We then have slots available for eight more students in the third classroom. We right now have, at Hamlet, we have two students projected to either be to fate or go out of district, and at Villanova, we have three students in that situation.
So instead of sending them out of district, they stay in this room. So we'd be saving definitely transportation and other costs that many of we don't see here.
Correct.
Okay. That makes sense? Anyone?
Chairman?
Yeah. It's similar to your line of thought, and also what you're saying is that you're creating capacity to not find ourselves in situations, because at this point, we're completely maxed out. So opening up capacity for the known needs of several students that could be placed in the program, but then future needs as well. My question is pertaining to the three additional students that are in out-of-district placements who are projected to return. Is there anything specific that's telling us that they are projected to return?
Yes. Okay. So different schools have different systems. To give you the clearest example, one of my schools, the students are color-coded. If you're on gold level, that's the top level, and you're, you're on a level each day. If you're on blue level, that's second to the top. If you get on blue or gold level and you maintain that for 45 days, then we can do a meeting to discuss whether or not it was like it's time for you to come back. In most cases at that point, we say you can come back, but we've had a couple of cases this year where for particular reasons, we felt the student wasn't ready to come back. But I would say that 80 to 90% of those cases, the kids come back and go to services, so they have the food and socks to come back.
Thank you very much for that information.
Anyone else? Dr. McGee?
Chairman Porche?
Yes.
Vice Chair Burr?
Yes.
Mrs. Capwell?
Yes.
Mrs. Nato?
Yes.
Mrs. Kapiskas?
Yes.
Next, I'll make a motion to adjourn at 8:50 PM. Is there a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Adjourn.